And it's yours.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm reconvening the public meeting of the Coventry Town Council at 6:10. Welcomes to the members of the council and welcome to members of the public. Mr. Wazika, how many members of the public are with us this evening?
We have eleven this evening, eleven.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call of the council.
Anne Dixon.
Yeah.
Jennifer Ludwig.
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc.
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley.
Yes.
Ed Wazika.
Here.
Nick Gorham.
Here.
And we also have Chief Frederick Heiss with us.
Welcome Chief. The Town Council met for Rhode Island General Law 42465A12 for a work session pertaining to anticipated collective bargaining with the IBPO and with Mr. Vincent Bragasta Esquire. Do I have a motion to adjourn from the executive session?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I don't know. Sure.
Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, roll call, vote.
Jennifer Ludwig.
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley.
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc.
Yes.
Anne Dixon.
Yes. The motion to adjourn from the executive session passes. I'll announce to the public that no votes were taken. Do I have a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, vote please.
Jennifer Ludwig.
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley.
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc.
Yes.
Anne Dixon.
Yes. The motion to seal the minutes of the executive session passes. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Did I lose connection? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. We are now in Agenda C2, Approval of Town Council Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes for January 4th, 2021?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion on any changes any members would like? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, roll call, vote.
Jennifer Ludwig.
Yes.
Kimberly Buckley.
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc.
Yes.
Anne Dixon.
Yes. The minutes for January 4th, 2021 are approved. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes for January 11th, 2021?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on changes or corrections?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwig.
I had two requested changes. So on page three of the meeting minutes, which is page 72 of the packet, it's in that kind of chunky paragraph towards the bottom. I believe it's the sixth sentence in, it says Vice President Ludwig mentioned that the first and foremost question from anyone that contacted her was, what is the time commitment and when do the groups meet? That next sentence, I'd like to ask for a change in that. It says she asked the chairpersons. Can we change that to I suggested? It was not a direct ask of the of the chairperson. And then I had a second one. On page eight, the third paragraph in, you need to add a vice in front of President Ludwig. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, vote please.
Jennifer Ludwig.
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley.
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc.
Yes.
Anne Dixon.
The minutes for January 11th, 2021 are approved as corrected. We are now on Agenda C3, Update on COVID Information by the Intron Town Manager, Mr. Ed Wazika. Mr. Wazika.
Thank you ma'am. First, I'd like to begin by thanking all of the people that are involved in our present process of putting together the vaccination clinic, the med pods to be actually issue, do the vaccinations. Chief Heiss has spent a substantial amount of time. Jill DeBraska, our Assistant EMA Director, has spent, I don't even know how many hundreds of hours on working on the plan. Our Poxon Recreation Department, along with Raina Blumenthal, is working on this. Bob Robelod from Human Services is involved in this. Chief Frank Brown and all of the fire districts are all involved. The school department has gotten numerous volunteers for us to assist in this. The process that's going to begin on February 18th, where we actually start issuing the 240 shots a week that we will be allocated. I can't get over the amount of people and time that this process is taking. Going to give you a list of just the number of people that run the first one on the 18th. We have a pharmacist, a pod commander, which by the way, I like that name, Pod Commander. Pretty cool. A medical director, IT support, six vaccinators, six administrators for the vaccinators, two parking lot attendants, two timestampers, two entrance people, two people for check-in, four observation people to watch the patients after they receive the shots, one covering the exit, we need a runner and we need a custodian. All total is like 31 people involved to do the coverage that we need to do to be able to issue this and do this program. The state's finally set up the online system for us. We have the date set, as I said, it's going to be Thursday, beginning on February 18th and every Thursday thereafter. We will be issuing a code red message to all of the residents prior to giving them the date and time that they will be able to go online and sign up on the, they will go into the meds. Let me show you what this actually looks like. This will be the screen that they see when they link over. As you can see, it's a eight screens that they're going to have to go through to actually do this sign-in. That will, I guess that'll be beginning this week for the first week for the 18th. We have a meeting tomorrow amongst all the people involved to finalize the actual messaging that we're going to be putting out as well as all of the final plans to prep for all this. So we'll have even more, it'll all be posted on the website. It'll be posted in social media. It will also be a press release going out like we did last week on all of it. Currently, and the links are on our webpage already. You could sign up with CVS and Walgreens for receiving through there. It's moving forward, it's taken a ton of work, but I'm looking forward to that first vaccination clinic that we have on the 18th. Chief, is there anything I've forgotten that you'd like to cover? You muted, sir. Your mic up?
Okay.
All right, apparently the chief's got some technical issues. Well, if there's anything I did forget, I will send an email out to everybody tomorrow, just giving if there's anything else. But you will be receiving the press release and all of the other paperwork once we finalize that tomorrow. We have a meeting at 9:00 AM to work and complete all of that. But that's where we are right now. We're looking at 240 doses. Four weeks of first shot, four weeks of second shot. So approximately 960 people over 75. The criteria is 75 and above and a town resident. And only those people will be allowed. Once the people go on and sign up, we will be going through the list and removing anyone who is on there that we don't feel as though is a resident or not over 75. And that's the criteria where we have to meet with the state. So that's where we are on the process right now.
Mr. Wazika, thank you so much for organizing this. It sounds like it's quite a logistics feat to put this together. Thirty-one people, what is the cost to Coventry to do this every week?
We haven't calculated that out yet at this point because of we're getting some volunteers for the vaccinators. We've got nurses that have volunteered through the school department. Some of the fire districts will also be bringing in their own personnel. So we won't be paying them, the districts will be paying them. So the cost is going to be, you know, a decent amount of money, but it's going to be shared by a number of entities throughout the town. So it won't just be the municipal side paying for this. Some of the fire districts will be covering some of it. But once we have exact numbers, I will be relaying that to the council.
So my next question is this, you mentioned there are 960 people over 75 in Coventry, is that correct?
No ma'am, there are approximately 3,500 people over 70.
Thirty-five hundred, okay. Okay, so 3,500 people over 75, 240 doses per week. How long is it going to take to get through all these people?
There's more planning coming down through the state that I can't get into at this point. So all I can talk about is this first eight weeks. And additionally, I'll be able to give it. But we've had meetings, I was on with the Lieutenant Governor today, along with all of the other town managers and mayors. And there's information and further development of the statewide plan that we can't get into currently. But right now, we will be looking at, at this point, what we know, those 960 doses and that's it. That's going to be eight weeks between the first and the second shot. If more come available, we'll be able to distribute them. But as it develops, this is a very fluid situation. As the chief and Ms. DeBraska can attest to, this has been, the info's not filtering down the way it needs to filter down from the state. So we're working with the best that we've got. We're developing our plans based on the current knowledge or the current information. And we're moving forward with those to handle it the best we can under the circumstances.
No, I understand the situation, but it sounds as if we start February 18th and it's going to take eight weeks for 960 people to get two dosage. That means that there are going to be quite a few people who won't be getting anything until maybe April or May.
Well, those people can't sign up now with CVS and Walgreens. They're doing the same thing, it's 75 and above. And they can simply go on our website, the links are there, to send them over to the direct signup on those two sites. I believe they're getting somewhere around 3,000 doses a week combined out of all of the pharmacies, but I haven't got that exact number. And I know it's ballparking in that 3,000 range. But that's another option right now for our residents to sign up and get a vaccination. Yes, at 240 a week, if that was the limit, we're looking at four years and eight months to vaccinate the town. So it's a, it would be a lengthy process. Fortunately, we will be getting more vaccine as time goes on. But right now, what's earmarked is that 240 for the next eight weeks at this point.
Questions for members of the council, Ms. Ludwig?
Thank you, Mr. Wazika and Chief Heiss and everyone who's contributed to pulling this together. I have a few questions, just want to make sure I understand here. I'm not totally understanding the CVS, Walgreens or Town angle here. So can you just lay out, if you are someone in Coventry, you're a resident of Coventry, you have an option of either signing up on our website and we'll send out a code red every week and say, hey, sign up tomorrow morning?
Correct, 240 doses available.
Or you can go to the CVS or Walgreens website?
Correct.
Okay, and are we charging anything for the Coventry dose?
Not that, no, no. There's no charge to the people coming in. They do take, the state is looking at insurance information as part of what they gather, but there is no charge if you don't have insurance or you don't have anything, there will be no charge for this to anybody.
You mentioned volunteers, are you looking for volunteers?
We are looking for qualified volunteers. We have a pretty good list from the school department with nurses and people where Mr. Levis has provided a list of almost 20 people. I think about seven or eight of them are nursing staff. So we've got them, again, this is going to be an eight-week process. We're looking, we're going to be utilizing the town employees as part of this as well during regular hours because this will take place between 10:30 and 2:30 in the afternoon for the vaccinations going on on those Thursdays. So we will be utilizing some employees from the town. And we are, we will be in process still looking for volunteers for certain areas, correct.
So by qualified volunteer, what does that mean?
We want to make sure that we have, not everybody.
Do they need to be, for example, a registered nurse or is there some other?
For the vaccinators, they would be, yes. And again, Jill would be dealing, Jill DeBraska would be dealing with that. If you've got anybody that's interested, have them send me an email and I will pass it on. If you've got someone that would consider doing it. Preferably nurses are good because that's where there's a big money cost for the vaccinated. Chief, am I correct on that? I know you can't speak, can you just shake your head?
Can you hear me now?
Now we can hear you, yes.
Technical difficulties here. You're correct. Vaccinators, that's where we would spend the most money if we would have to pay somebody to do it. And we'd be looking for volunteers in that category.
Okay, thank you. And Ed, the last item, you had mentioned that we are taking only Coventry residents.
Correct.
So how is that being checked?
First and foremost, we're using the voter registration list for starters. We also have, you know, the land evidence records. We have records with people that have signed up through Human Services. So we're going to do our best, I'm not saying somebody might slip through. I can't guarantee we're going to have 100%, but we are going to do our best to ensure that it is only town residents and only people 75 and older.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wazika, I have just one more question. I mean, it seems based on the news reports that in some states, people over 75 have already been given their vaccination. And here, we're in Coventry, Rhode Island, and it's going to take months and months for us to even hit that population, let alone get down to the 65 and up population. What is happening in the state of Rhode Island that has put us in this situation?
We don't know, we're not getting that information on why the numbers are where they are. But that's our frustration and that's a frustration of most municipal leaders. We're all in this boat together. And it's a killer, 240 doses is nothing. And you know, that's 31 people that we're going to take up a full day and all of the work that's involved in planning this to issue 240 doses eight times. And it's going to be tough. But so, I don't know why the problem with our state compared to some others. We're not getting that data. All we know is we're hoping for additional dosage, but we don't know at this time.
Thank you. Members of the council, any other questions? Mrs. Shockley.
Hi, thank you. And I will say, I had reached out to Mr. Robelod a couple of times and I really appreciate the assistance from members of the community. And then I just wanted to ask, so as far as the doses at CVS and Walgreens, they're not on the same time limitation as us, right? You sign up, they tell you what days are available. You could go on any time to try to get a date.
Yes.
As opposed to ours.
But they're under the same restrictions, they've only got a certain dosage. Doses. So you go on and yeah, I have not personally gone on to their website to try to sign up only because I didn't. I'd hear with testing odds, we can test it and kill the registration. So it's removed from the system. We don't have that ability with Walgreens, so I haven't gone, I haven't seen it. I don't know if the chief has. So we're limited on what we know about it. It's just started late last week and they've got very limited doses as well, so.
Then I'm just wondering, say you're trying to help a parent or a grandparent and you're not sure they've gotten their code red message, could you just log in each morning to vaccinateri.org and attempt to get a spot for that 75-plus resident?
No.
You have to get the code red call?
You want, what will happen is you won't be, you won't actually, you won't actually have, the link won't be up, it won't be in, it won't be operational. And it stops when it's full.
Right, but if you just tried to log on and it happened to be during a segment of time where it wasn't full yet, you'd be able to get onto the website?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. And then could you, where would people find that code red signup? Is it on our website?
But on our website, everything's under that COVID-19 vaccination. If you go to just CoventryRI.org, right below the welcome is the link that'll bring you to that page. All of the data that's pertinent to all of this, all of the signups, everything's right there, which is also the same place that you're going to find the link to be able to go on and set up for the registration for the vaccinations. One of the things I would like to try and emphasize, I noticed we've got 34 people on now and we're going to do it in our code red messaging as well as our social media and all the rest of it. We understand that everybody is going to be computer savvy, they're going to have difficulty, we're talking about an older group of residents. If you've got family, if you've got neighbors and you know they need to sign up, please reach out to them, give them a hand. We're hoping that we're going to have a number that's going to be given out when we do the code red. If you absolutely positively can't find a way to get online to do it so we can do it, but that number will go out and it'll change each time so we don't get inundated. We had over 400 calls come in on when the press put out that we were going to be doing it two weeks ago when we weren't. So it overloaded our phone system, overloaded our employees. So if you know people and you've got elderly neighbors, elderly friends, we need you, we're asking that you help out by getting them and signing them up and doing what's needed so they can have a possibility of getting it. And whether it's with us or it's with CVS or Walgreens. But we definitely need that assistance from the people out there.
We all set on this topic? Okay, excellent. Okay, thank you so much Chief, so much. Thanks to Mr. Wazika. It's a logistics night here, I'm sure. But you've had a lot of good help from department heads that you have, so I'm happy to hear that. But it is disappointing in the number of dosages that are actually coming into Coventry and the slow pace by which people over 75 will be vaccinated. And then we still, of course, want the people 65 and up range and 60 and up range to be vaccinated. It sounds like it's going to be a long time. But we'll just have to keep doing what we're doing, wearing our mask and staying socially distant and continuing on Zoom. So thank you so much. We're now on Agenda Item Number C4, Introduction of Our New Finance Director, Ms. Lisa Mills. Mr. Wazika, and Lisa is with us.
Yes, she is.
Face.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hello.
I'd like everyone to welcome our latest and newest member of the Team Coventry Town. Lisa is formerly the Finance Director for Portsmouth. She's got a bachelor's degree in accounting from Louisiana Tech University as well as a Master of Science in Taxation from Bryant College. She also has some municipal experience formerly as the Treasurer and HR Director for Foster as well as the Controller for Johnston. Ms. Mills has also worked for and was the CFO for the state's, what I'm assuming is one of the largest, if not the largest, construction company in Rhode Island, which is the JR Venagro Construction Company. She's spent a number of years there. She has an extensive background in tax, taxes, auditing, accounting. She is a great addition, she's been with us two weeks. And the workload that she's already accomplished in two weeks has been excellent. One of the things we're doing and compliments Lisa is we're going to be giving the budget in a new format, which I think everybody is going to love. It's more user-friendly, it'll have all the actuals in there, multiple years. She's done a great job on working on that already as well as the CARES application for a substantial amount of potential COVID money that she's gotten in. So in the short two weeks she's been here, she's accomplished a ton of work already and I'm happy that she's here, I'm thankful she's here. And I'd just like to introduce you guys and you can welcome her here. And Lisa, are you up for any questions?
Ms. Mills, tell us a little bit more about yourself. We heard about your wonderful educational background and your career, tell us a little bit more about yourself.
Well, like Anna stated, I have an extensive background in, I started off in public accounting. I worked for Ernst &amp; Young and Labatola and I was an auditor and then I went into taxation, I have a master's in taxation. And I also was, like you stated, worked for three different towns as a finance director slash treasurer. And I have a strong accounting background and I was hired for JR Venagro Corp., which I was originally the controller and I was promoted to CFO in six months. You know, personally, I love numbers, I love to cook and I love country living and I live in Foster, so that's about it.
Excellent, short commute to work, is it?
What's that ma'am?
Very short commute to work.
Oh yeah, it's only 18 miles as opposed to 62, so I'm doing all right.
Excellent, not too many gasoline stations between here and there, but short ride. We're so happy to have you with us.
Thank you.
Would any members of the council like to ask Ms. Mills any questions? So welcome her. Want to start with Ms. Shockley?
No, no questions at this time, but I do want to welcome you to the team. It's exciting to hear that you have some new ideas that the work you've done in just a few weeks is bringing in COVID money, making the budget more readable to members of the town and the council. So we already appreciate what you're providing and really look forward to working with you.
Ms. Ludwig?
Ditto, welcome. No, no questions, but you know, I'm sure we'll meet face to face at some point, so welcome to the group.
Thank you.
And Ms. LeBlanc, he's our numbers person.
Ms. Mills, I just want to say thank you for joining the team, decided to join us here. I didn't realize, I've been asking Ed to put actuals in our budget. I didn't realize we just needed to hire you and then we could see actuals in our budget. So I am already thankful that you're here, so just wanted to say.
Thank you, you're going to really love the presentation. I have the approved budgets and next side-by-side with the actual for a couple of years. And then we have FY '21 and we have FY '21 today for six months. And then we're going to have the proposed and you're going to have the delta, the dollars and the delta and the percentage. So you can keep an eye on, you know, make sure everything's and I also put the assessed values, the history of it. So you can see, the taxpayers can see the actual tax rate that Coventry has been charging over the years and it's been relatively, if you did the average, it's relatively modest because we had a year with zero. So that's going to be helpful too.
Sounds like a lot of useful information, really appreciate it. And you said a key word, you said approved budgets. So hopefully that can happen at some point, so thank you.
Ms. Mills, it sounds like you've conquered the financial package that we bought a while ago. How is it for you? I'm just kind of curious.
When you say how is what?
The financial package that you've been given to work with.
Oh, you know, it's fine, I mean, I'm not sure what you mean by package, but I mean, the staff that's here, very, very nice, some of the nicest people I've worked with. Very, very nice. Some of the nicest people I've worked with. They're technically very good. I think it's, we're gonna get a lot on it. Just we just need to do a little bit management in the finance area. Communication and some making the most, what I, I'm pretty well versed at is making complex things simple. So we're gonna, we're gonna present something, the budget and and other other projects in the simplest form.
I think I was referring to the Keystone. Is that what it's called, Ed? The Keystone?
Yeah, the Keystone, the software. I I'd like to hold my thoughts on that. I'm I'll be honest with you. I'm not crazy about it. I implemented Infinite Visions for the town of Portsmouth. I was the IT administrator for that. That was a phenomenal package. You could write several reports at any given point in time. Right now, this package seems to be, we have to request a lot of IT guidance from. The Keystone Group and I think it's more DOS driven and. I'm not totally crazy about it, but I'm gonna keep an open mind.
Excellent. Well, it sounds like you've already conquered a lot of issues that we've had. And we're looking forward to working with you. You've come at just the right time. Ed really just loves budgeting, but he's happy to pass it on to some knowledgeable person. So thank you so much. Coming at the right time is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are we all set, council members? Okay, next.
Lisa, thank you.
What?
I said, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. We're now on agenda item number C five, update by Mr. Kevin McGee. Director of Coventry Public Works and snow removal process and current condition of our vehicles. Mr. McGee has provided the council with a thirteen-page report, which I will ask to be posted on our Coventry website. Mr. McGee, we're ready for you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for having me tonight. The report that I provide to Mr. Wazika on the status of the DPW fleet is pretty straightforward. I mean, as I indicated in the letter, this is probably the most challenging year I've had in seven plus years that I've been here. We have not been able to field a full frontline fleet of snow equipment for any storm this year. And it continues for what we're anticipating for tomorrow. I will be down four vehicles for tomorrow with no spare vehicles. We are trying to double up. I can only say that we're doing what we can do with the help of a phenomenal group of people that are dedicated to working. You know, fourteen to twenty-two hour shifts. A vehicle maintenance crew that are working around the clock and sometimes trying to get things out. I'm talking about four vehicles or five vehicles that are down, but throughout the storm. It is in the dozens that they come in with something that's broken and they turn around, get it fixed and put it back out on the street so that we can. With Band-Aids and duct tape and bubble gum sometimes just to get it going. The town has stopped financing capital improvements and for the last five years. As I indicated in the letter, you know, the functional life of municipal equipment and vehicles is fifteen years. We are so far over that with the frontline pieces that it's, it's hard to get parts for some of these vehicles. Years ago, the council and the taxpayers would fund. A replacement vehicle, large vehicle and a smaller vehicle on an annual basis. That hasn't happened in the last five years and we are down. To vehicles that are gonna continue to get that twenty, on the averages, twenty years is most of our vehicles. And are approaching that. The last time we had a large purchase was through the bond issue back in twenty fourteen. And that, those vehicles were purchased in twenty sixteen. That was the last large group of vehicles that were purchased. And that was four. Of the large six-wheeler trucks. In the letter, you can see the pieces that are down now. Some of them are still down. Some of them have gone up. I've got additional pieces since this letter that are down and out of service at this time. The ability of us to perform the numerous tasks that we're asked to do, whether it be in snow. Or whether it's through the. Seasonal work that needs to be done. These piece of equipment are. The heart and soul of what are what we do. We give, continue to provide the services. We will always provide the services. It's just how efficiently that we can. Normally, the productivity of vehicles. And the purchase of vehicles is the lowest common denominator that you can invest in. If we're not gonna increase our manpower. Employees, then productivity of the equipment that we can do more with less is important. But when the department hasn't seen an increase in employment for the, for public works. In over ten years and the equipment continues to age. The ability for us to do the most productive work is is reduced. I can go, if you want me, I can read through the letter, but you all, you folks all have the letter. And I think I've tried to anticipate what some of those questions would be. And we have one piece of equipment that's on here. That's truck number eight, which we finally get back on the road. But to, from July to January, cost of sixty-three hundred fifty-seven dollars to get that truck back on the road. Ladies and gentlemen, for for about four thousand dollars, we can have an annual lease to have a brand new vehicle. And we need to look at the possibility of leasing equipment as opposed to. And getting new rather. If we can't afford to buy three or four new pieces, we may only want to look at a four or five-year purchase price. And be able to get into a turnaround so that we can lease vehicles and get them out on the road. The one you're looking at right now, truck eighteen, just blew a transmission. It's being, it's at the transmission shop. Now to get an estimate. The truck is is so old and so other, so many other problems with it. We have to deem whether or not it's worthwhile to put a transmission in it or to. Put it out of service. Those kind of decisions we're making, but we can't continue to put people, things out of good service. Here's an excavator. We had two excavators. One excavator had a broken frame two years ago. It's been on the Capitol to replace it. Now our frontline excavator is down with a complete drive system that we have to get from China. And we're waiting. It's been eight weeks. And luckily, this time of year, we we're not in need of it. But if this happened during the season, a lot of our drainage problem of projects would be put on hold. We have a brush tractor that's, drive system is is downwards right now. That brush tractor is, you know, upwards of twenty-two years old. And it works on the eastern part of town, all the way to the western part of town. Cutting the brush back from the roadway so it's safer drivers to go by as it continues to grow. Western end of Coventry, Mrs. Dixon, we have our road grader on all those gravel roads. That road grader is thirty-four years old. It's already had a replacement engine and transmission. We can't continue throwing good money after bad. We have to think about either paving all the roads in in Coventry or look at. Getting the equipment that we need to maintain them. And I'm just laying it to you folks where we are and what the status of the DPW fleet is. And it's up to you folks to make the determination of whether we can fund it going forward. Thank you.
Questions for members of the council? Ms. Ludwig?
Thank you, Mr. McGee, for for showing us some of the pictures. I think we're kind of in the thick of it right now. We have a snowstorm this weekend. We have snow coming up. Obviously, this is very timely discussion because by the time we start talking about the budget and then we getting, get into the actual voting time. You know, the snow is long gone. So I think what I'd like to do is is share some of those photos with the public. You know, I'm I'm not a, an expert, but I think what we were looking at in a few of those photos looked like rust. Maybe you can comment a little bit. You know, I saw a couple of things that looked like they were held together with the black electric tape.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. The problem we have right now with the corrosiveness of the undercarriage system not being able to get washed. They wash when the temperatures are above freezing. They wash all the vehicles that they can. I've had in my capital budget for the last five years, an undercarriage washing system so that it can wash the underside. Which eliminates the rot, rot and rust on the frame to all of the mechanicals, whether it be brakes, whether it be transmission. The engine parts. That can be utilized for other departments also. I mean, the police department can be welcome to come through the undercarriage wash to have it done. If the school buses wanted to be hired to come in and wash the underside of the school buses for a price. It's, we're investing, you know, one dump truck, six-wheel dump truck. Is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Once you're purchasing one of those, the underwater. Wash system is approximately two hundred and forty-nine thousand. To continue the life cycle of those vehicles through their life cycle of fifteen to twenty years. We have to have, find a way of getting that undercarriage cleaned so that we can maintain the fleet for that timeframe. Everyone knows that the vehicles that are made today with the type of metal and alloys are not the steel that we had from back in the eighties. That lasted much longer. This newer. Alloy and steel doesn't last and it's more susceptible to the. Salt and sand that we have to deal with in the most harshest time of the year and during the biggest storms. We're out there with it.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mrs. Shockley?
Thank you, Mr. McGee. I just wanted to ask, so how many trucks do we? Need in our fleet?
Right now.
What is our goal?
Yeah, we have twenty-six routes that we do and we self-perform all these snow plowing activities. We don't subcontract any outside vendors. We need twenty-six vehicles just to do the routes. I've got two one-ton trucks. The smaller vehicles, like the truck number eighteen you saw the picture of, that's one of our spare trucks. I have no large six-wheel trucks as a spare. One of those goes down, that route is down. So we need to have at least a minimum of two spare trucks. So we need at least two to three of those larger trucks to get us up to speed where we have. We're not gonna have twenty-some odd year old vehicles trying to be out there on a frontline. So currently, we need three large, we need three large six-wheelers that'll get us to current dates within the fifteen-year basis. And then one, one smaller, one ton, we'll need for the coming year.
What's the estimated cost if we were to purchase or lease? Have any idea what we're talking about?
Yeah, actually, I I do. In fact, it's in my, it's in my budget for this coming year. I'm completing that now. We're looking at the vicinity of about six hundred and seventy-five thousand for an outright purchase. And that's for the three, three vehicles, the three larger vehicles and the small vehicle. We also have our aerial bucket truck that's over twenty-five years old. That's out there on a regular basis, whether it's be. Trembling trees, putting up signs on the telephone poles. That's used on a, on a regular basis during the good weather. That we have to fight with every year to get it certified because of its age.
As someone who uses that truck, it's a scary truck to be up in it in that bucket.
And the one we have right now is not an insulated bucket. So we have to be very careful about where we are in relation to our lines. Most of them, the newer ones come through with fiberglass buckets. So they're insulated. It protects our employees. In my budget presentation, you'll see what what the request is and we actually have some lease numbers on what it would be at least in this leasing program.
You know, I just make one comment and that is except for issues that generate many emails to me. Such as, you know, water levels in Johnson's Pond, which is a very critical issue. Most of the emails that I get have to do with road conditions out in Western Coventry. And people are concerned about sweets, street sweeping, puddles being filled, water issues, et cetera. But the reality of the situation is, and when we have continued to have level funded budgets. Some services are not going to be available. And I think that residents have to give a hard, long look at what kinds of benefits and services they feel and deem. Very critical and important and have to think about what that is going to cost because. We can't continue, as Mr. McGee said, with the vehicles that we have and continue to provide. All of the work that is being done with these vehicles when he's got a reduction in fleets and he can't even find a pox to replace these. These vehicles, fix them, just to get them on the road again. That's a very critical issue for the, for the voters to consider. Make, become an issue of safety and what are we willing to pay for safety as we go forward into the next budget year?
If I may, ma'am, also to keep in mind that this past year, our asphalt budget was cut in half. And we had working on half crew for a good part of the summer. So we couldn't field enough people. To do any road projects. They were all put towards sanitation, whether it be yard waste or just picking up trash and recycling. You'll see through the budget that we've lost a lot of momentum for this year. And so any drainage issues we have, again, we are dealing with. But again, as you can see without that mini excavator, we're down, we had two, we're down to just one that's down, broken right now. We can't keep that momentum going and provide the services unless it's funded. The department needs to be funded. I'm not asking for more people. I'm just asking for us to be funded so that we can do the job that I know we can do and we will do barring COVID.
And it seems to be the services that people want, based on the emails that I'm getting and the telephone calls. But that's for the voters to decide. But I appreciate the monthly report that you prepared for us. Complete with photos that you've taken because a photo, as they say, is worth a thousand words and it's there. We're using black tape to fix things and people can see the corrosion and pots just laying on the ground because we can't assemble them. That's an important message, an important visual. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions that people have? Mrs. Shockley?
Hi, I'm sorry, I just, I'm, so you said in two thousand sixteen, you purchased four trucks.
Correct.
And before that, the town was regularly buying new trucks?
They were buying one large truck and one smaller truck every year in the capital budget.
Why are all our trucks twenty?
Well, they're more than, some of them are twenty and some of them are fourteen, some of them are thirteen. Two thousand twelve, before that was a large, last large purchase that town made.
Okay, I'm just having trouble understanding why we don't have more trucks that are less than ten years old. Because of how you said we used to buy them up until twenty seventeen.
But it was one at a time, ma'am, wasn't a large amount.
But you bought four in two thousand sixteen and a large and a small every year for the years before that. I'm just having trouble with the math. I'm sorry.
Let me try to help you with that. I have the listing of our vehicles here and. We, the last time they had a large purchase was in two thousand and twelve. There were three trucks purchased. There was nothing else purchased from two thousand twelve until two thousand sixteen. So you went four years with no.
Okay, so that's where you lost me. I thought you just said for the past five years, we hadn't been buying them. But before that, we had.
Correct.
Okay, so really, we bought three in two thousand twelve, four in two thousand sixteen. And all the rest are older than that.
Correct. And we have, we retired those other, other vehicles that those were replacements for. So. You know, we just need to get new. We, we don't have a lot of trucks that are.
Under ten.
Two thousand twelve, they're ten years old now. So another five years and they're gonna be out of service.
Okay, thank you for this conversation. It made, it made it clearer for me.
Good clarifying question to Mrs. Shockley. Thank you. Other questions? Okay, Mr. McGee, I'm sure we'll be hearing you, from you again shortly when we're in budget season. So. Thank you very much for this presentation. It begins to give us information that we can use to start thinking about.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, folks.
Night.
Thank you.
We're now in agenda item C five, an update on the status of the finance audit by the interim town manager, Mr. Wazika.
Thank you, ma'am. The audit is. It began several months ago and it's been moving along. The audit this year is a perfect storm of problems and delays because of the problems. We had a school department finance system that was hit with ransomware. All of their data lost. They had to spend months and months trying to rebuild it all. All of that wasn't found. We've lost our finance director. We were also in the process of updating the finance package. All of these things have put a delay on the, I spoke with the auditors today to see exactly where we are. And we're waiting for for some data from. And we're waiting for, for some data from Milliman on the OPEC cost for the school department side. And unfortunately, that data doesn't look like it's going to be in until the beginning of March, so we are more than likely going to have to request another extension from the audit in general. He has already been contacted by our auditors, advising him that we're waiting on this data. And that's where we are. I mean, everything else is pretty much done. Lisa has to dump off a an asset of the total assets to them, which she will get to within the next couple of days. And then we're simply waiting for the Milliman data. And until they get that, they're not going to be able to finalize the audit. But everything else is done. It's all been reviewed. They're at that point.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Thank you, President Dixon. Mr. Wazika, what was the first required deadline for the finished statements to be submitted to the state?
It was the end of the year. It's had to be in before the end of December.
Okay, and we, so we had a request, one waiver and what is, what is that?
February, one for January, one for February.
Okay, and did Milliman not know our deadline? I just wanted to know why we haven't received the data.
The, the bottom line on that was Milliman couldn't get the data from, from the school. They were having difficulty getting it out from what I understand. And they were requesting it and requesting it. And again, because of the, because of the perfect storm of problems, they had issues trying to get it. So that's what's delayed it all. And now that they've finally been able to get it out, Milliman has it and they're doing their analysis. But it is going to take some time to get that.
So is it your expectation that we'll have issued statements before the, the budget talks begin?
Yes.
Or no? Yes, okay. All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Ms. Ludwig?
So just to clarify, because we've been talking about a performance audit in the past, this discussion is about the annual financial audit that we have to submit, correct, Mr. Wazika?
Correct. From an outside auditing firm that comes in, we have a contract with, and we've recently changed. This year, we have Bloom Shapiro is our new, our new vendor and they, they started May, right after the end of the fiscal year, they, they started the process.
Thank you.
But yes, this is the financial audit that's required by state law.
Mrs. Shockley, did you have a question?
Yeah. Mr. Wazika, would you mind just explaining to those on the Zoom meeting? Just what is looked for in this financial audit, what we get for feedback from the financial audit?
This goes through, actually, you know what, Ms. Mills, why don't you explain what the whole, the best audit, this is your field of expertise? If you wouldn't mind, we'll put you on the spot here.
All right, so Kimberly, what was your exact question? What, what is the feedback we get on the audit or what is the purpose of the audit?
What's the purpose of the audit and are there any deliverables from getting the audit? Are we told these are changes that should be made?
So, so the two-part question there, so the, the purpose of the audit is to make sure that the town is, you know, functioning with proper internal controls and, you know, all the, not just the general fund, but the, the special revenue funds are, are done with, in the course with the government accounting standards. They do provide feedback and matter of fact, I had a list from, I believe it was John, the last, the last finance director here, that they had provided some management feedback. And typically they'll have feedback on, you know, whether it be internal controls or it's typically just internal control. I mean, so.
So they're looking at how it's being managed. I apologize, I thought you.
No, no, I, that's all I had to say. Go ahead. Sorry.
Okay, so they're really looking for how we, how we manage our accounts. They're not looking to say this, there's misspending here, there's something going wrong in the back.
No, the, the, the purpose of the, the audit and you, you'll, you'll kind of see on the, the first page of the financials. Really to ensure the town, town council, the town citizens, that there's no material misstatements in the financial statement. So it's not to, to prove that there's no fraud. It's, they, they can't prove that there's no fraud or they're proved. They make a statement that there's no, no material misstatements and they check the internal controls, they audit different parts of invoices and cash accounts and deposits and transits and stuff like that, to make sure things are done timely. So, so that's, that's really the purpose to have you, for citizens and the, and the council itself to have some comfort that the financial statements and the, the budget that is being provided to you is, you know, in balance. And it's not this numbers on a page.
It doesn't cover things like we spent too much on sand, you know, we did this. It doesn't, it doesn't do that. That's not what it's designed for.
It's saying, yes, you did buy the sand.
Yes, and that we paid for it and, yes.
Okay. No, I really appreciate that. And what's Milliman?
They're an actuarial firm and they're looking at actual bid data and the.
So in, and they do, I haven't seen the pension reports, but they, they will do an actuary report on, you know, if, how, how well your pension is funded based on the percentages of return that they're, they're using and I, I did read a little bit of, of, of your report or the financials, I should say, what, no, and it's, the town of Coventry, I believe, is underfunded a fair amount on some of their pensions. So, so that's, only ten percent of the CPAs out there are actuaries and that's why it's taking, probably taking them a long time because they haven't got the information. Unless they get it, they're so backed up because there's not enough actuaries out there. When, when I worked for Portsmouth, we gave them the numbers in August and we got it on December, you know, twenty-third, literally. Well, it was probably December first, but it, it, there's just not enough actuaries out there in Rhode Island.
I appreciate that.
Other questions? Well, thank you. Ms. Mills, you've had quite a workout this evening. You were just supposed to be introduced and you've had to answer all these questions.
That's all good.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wazika was very happy to have you with us so that he didn't have to answer all these questions. He usually does a wonderful job.
I knew she would do a much better job of explaining it than I could.
No, you always.
Rough around the edges sometimes, so.
No, you've always done a wonderful job, Mr. Wazika, but now you can take a little bit of our and our once in a while, so that's good. Thank you, Ms. Mills, for answering all these questions. You've only been two weeks on the job and you seem like you've been here for a long time, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're all set with the financial audit? Okay, excellent. Now on agenda. D one, a discussion and update on House Resolution H fifty thirty, which is our reference pages eighty to eighty-one. Mr. LeBlanc asked for this to be on the agenda and I'm going to ask him to. I'll leave the discussion. Mr. LeBlanc, please.
Thank you, President Dixon, and thank you for adding this to our town council agenda tonight. I, I had specifically asked for one, a resolution that I had prepared to be the agenda item. But perhaps we can discuss that at the legislators' meeting next week. But certainly can discuss this H fifty thirty. So at a very high level, the reason why I mentioned this bill in my resolution that I had prepared was because Rep. Noray, who is a Coventry, part of the Coventry delegation, he introduced this bill. And at a very high level, it's essentially just asking the Attorney General to get involved in an investigation related to the Kent County water bills. Per the presentation that Mr. Simmons, the Executive Director and Chief Engineer of Kent County Water, that he gave to us, I think was last week. He, he referenced that they were doing, the, sorry, the chief engineer referenced four things that they're working on. They're working on making a significant investment in the reporting system. They're moving to monthly billings. They're currently going house to house on any house that is flagging that has a leak. And they're investigating high consumptions and, and people submitting bills to them. But just like we have external auditors come in and do it in an independent review. I believe the, the purpose of this house bill is to have that independent review of these high water bills. There's, there's three specific reasons that I want to support this, this resolution. We have eighty-four hundred homeowners connected to Kent County Water. We, I want to support our local Coventry delegation and third and probably most significant is I'm afraid of next year's sewer usage bills because they are based off of Kent County water usage. And we did receive a, a, a letter from Mr. Simmons today. And actually, in that letter, he references the fact that sewer usage bills are based off of Kent County water. And he further stated that the majority of the use was driven from outside water use from irrigation and recreation. These uses do not enter the sewer and in effect should not be charged. So again, an independent review of Kent County Water's billing, in my opinion, is, is one hundred percent necessary. My resolution also mentioned a letter that Senator Raptakis is penning to the Auditor General. So I just believe any type of governmental agency that wants to investigate the Kent County water billings is appropriate. We have a lot of, I, I've been CC'd on a lot of emails from residents to the Public Utilities Commission with very high bills. I mean, I'm talking thousand dollars for a quarter. And to me, it's outrageous and I just want to make sure that the consumption is accurate. But at a very high level, all this resolution is doing is asking for just that, an investigation by a third party, not just Kent County Water.
So Mr. LeBlanc has the option of putting before us a motion to support his resolution or we have the option of having him presented at the legislators' meeting, if the council so wishes, at the legislators' meeting for a vote then. And that way, it's dramatic. They see that we are supporting this resolution and they're all there present.
I do want to just call out President Dixon that I don't believe we can discuss the resolution. It's not on the agenda for tonight, so.
It's under action, discussion and our action. And I did speak to the legal council that it is possible. But since the people on the council do not have a copy of your resolution, it makes more sense for us to present it in their packet at the legislators' meeting. At the next agenda item, we will be discussing items that we would look like on that agenda and that seems an appropriate time to discuss it then. But it's your call.
Again, I, I would prefer that the council actually gets to see a draft of the resolution before they vote on it. So a, and I actually would like to maybe Rep. Noray and/or Senator Raptakis might provide additional facts before we actually vote on a resolution about this issue.
Okay, excellent. All right.
If I, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Wazika?
If I may add one, a couple of points on that, just to advise the, the council. I don't know if the council's aware, but that bill is not coming out of committee. It's they, the committee has decided to hold it for further study, which means it, it's, at this point, it's not coming out. In reference to, and I don't know if Mr. LeBlanc's aware, that people who use irrigation systems on their lawns typically have a deduct meter. Almost every one of them does. So any amount of water that's utilized by the irrigation system is actually removed before the charges are put, put forward on the sewer bills. So that's something that does go on, that happens on, like I said, almost all of them. When you put in an irrigation system in your property, they suggest and they do it and it comes off that bill. But the, and also just one last thing, the Attorney General has written a letter advising that he does not do this type of investigation and.
Mr. Wazika, I, I actually have a copy of his letter, so it's not that he disapproves of this.
No, he recommends.
He actually, actually recommends it and he just, he makes his own amendment, so.
Recommends it goes to the PUC.
Correct, but.
I just want them to have.
Once it goes to the PUC, he then actually, in the amendment, says that he wants a copy of that report to be given to his office. So that he can make an ultimate decision whether or not he gets involved.
I just want the council, I have all the information on it, Jamie. I'm looking to do.
Yeah, so just for reference for the council, we are referring to Bill twenty twenty-one dash H fifty thirty. It was introduced January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and it was referred to House Corporations. On January twenty-ninth, it was scheduled for hearing and or consideration on February first. On February first, the committee recommended the measure be held for further study. We also did receive an email from, you all received an email from Mr. Simmons today. Mr. LeBlanc referenced part of that letter. But in one of the last paragraphs that Mr. Simmons had, he said, lastly, regarding House Resolution H fifty thirty being discussed at tonight's town council meeting, the resolution is currently being held for further study. Kent County Water Authority provided written and oral testimony regarding this resolution to House Cooperation Committee on February first. The Attorney General provided testimony, has requested amendments. DPUC and PUC also provided written testimony regarding this resolution for review. So I would just recommend that members of the council, in preparation for a discussion at the legislators' meeting, would look at the details for twenty twenty-one dash fifty, I'm sorry, H fifty thirty, and also look at the email that was received this evening from Mr. Simmons. That way you'll be well-prepared for the discussion and of course, I'm sure members of the delegation who are sponsoring this, who are listed as Miss Representative McNamara, Mr. Solomon Junior, Mr. Bennett and Mr. Noray. They have introduced this resolution and I'm sure any one of them could answer any questions for you. Anything else you'd like to add, Mr. LeBlanc, at this time?
No, I, I just wanted to raise this as I, I believe it's a concern of many in town.
That's excellent. We want residents to notify or contact the uptown council people so that we can raise some of these issues before the, the council membership for discourse and deliberation. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. Any other questions? We are now on agenda D two, discussion on topics for joint meeting of the Coventry School Committee, Coventry Town Council and a Rhode Island Assembly Senators and Representatives who represent Coventry. And the discussion is now open as to what you would like on our agenda. I just want to mention that unless it is on an agenda that is posted, the topic, a new topic cannot be raised during that legislators' meeting. I have so notified the Superintendent of Schools and the Coventry, I'm going to start, the Coventry School Committee Chairperson that we are asking for agenda items from the school committee. They will be discussing their agenda items this Thursday night at their meeting. They will be submitting their items to me Thursday night. And then Mr. Wazika and I will be working on putting that agenda together for a meeting with the legislators. Because there is a holiday on Monday, or the Monday preceding the meeting. The agenda will have to be posted on that Friday, so I think it's a week from Friday, the agenda has to be posted, correct, Mr. Wazika? You're, you're on mute.
My wife would love if I was on mute. That, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, open discussion, suggestions for what you would like on the agenda for the legislators' meeting, which is Wednesday, the seventeenth. Ms. Ludwig?
So it sounds like the school committee will be submitting something to you later this week. And then I'd be interested to see what they have there. One of the items that might fit in, I don't know if they're already discussing this or not. I know we've obviously had a number of issues with funding calculation, that type of thing. But I'm wondering if, if we might discuss putting a limit on a reduction in the funding calculation. So that has been fuzzy ground over the last several years on exactly what's being given. So for example, last year, we were reduced by approximately nine hundred thousand dollars and that is to go out to our voters for that and to get it rejected. Now it comes back on us to say, okay, well, we didn't plan to have to cut everything. So having some sort of limit on that, on a percentage that they can reduce that on a year-on-year basis, I think would be helpful for us. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that there is no decrease or increase or whatever it is. I'm just suggesting a, a possible. I'm just suggesting a, a possible limit or, or cap on how much it can change negatively.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on the suggestion that, that Ms. Ludwig has? Mrs. Shockley.
I agree with Ms. Ludwig. That would definitely be something I think that the town and schools should show a united front on. Like Vice President Ludwig said, having to make up for lost revenue through our tax base is even harder than having to add in order to increase our budget, in order to increase, I should say, our services. For the same services, you're just having to take the money from the residents instead of from the state. So I think it's a very important issue to discuss for the town as a whole, even though it, it does basically deal with the school.
Thank you.
And I don't know on the meeting, and I'm asking here, do we have to be specific in our ask, or can we just say we want to speak to this issue and have a discussion?
We can do either one, however, in many of the past meetings to which, you know, which I have attended, we've all come away very frustrated because it seems like nothing has happened. And so I did speak to three of our reps two weekends ago. And I asked them, what can we do to make these meetings more productive? And one of the things they said is this, let us know, give us a heads up about what's going to be on the agenda. In other words, even though we post the agenda, they don't necessarily have an opportunity to read it and absorb what it is we want and be specific. So if we ask an open-ended question, it's easy for people not to really understand what we're asking for, what change in the law we might be asking for. So the more specific we can be, the better off we'll be. So I'd like to ask this question to Mr. Gorham now. Mrs. Shock, Ms. Ludwig has come up with a suggestion that in some way we would ask for a limit on the funding calculation so that we, you know, towns won't lose so much money, which then has to be made up by the town in some way. So what could, in what way could we frame this particular request?
Is this relating to the 30-50 resolution that was passed? No, this is different. Okay.
It's different. The one we passed was, yeah, go ahead.
It was to amend, I believe it was 4452. That's what you passed last.
That's separate.
That's a separate issue.
That's a separate.
Yes.
So could you just explain a little bit what exactly you're, you're driving at?
Because I. Sure, so the. So there's a funding calculation that the state uses to determine how much state funding will come to Coventry and every other town in the state. And so for example, last year, we lost approximately $900,000 that we thought we would be getting. It was the difference between what was given the year before and last year. So then we have to go back and make up that $900,000. Either somehow we have to cut, we have to go out and ask for funds directly from the taxpayer. I'm not saying that that number can't come down. What I'm suggesting is we put some sort of limit on how large it can come down in one given year. So rather than just letting it be any number, could we cap it at, say, 2% or something not as drastic as almost a million dollar change year-on-year?
And it's for the school specifically that she's speaking.
Yeah.
Can I say something?
Oh, no, go ahead, Lisa, please.
Nick, I think it was, they talked about it at that last meeting when we met with the Finance Director for the school, Sarah. And Steve Coleman was in that meeting. The state is very well aware of there's problems with the calculation because what happened with, in, in the case of Coventry, you've got a large decrease because you had more COVID funding. So it's like they took it, so you.
We were losing it before the COVID funding.
Well, I think it had a lot, that may be the case, but I think from what Sarah was saying, I, I'm just reiterating what she said in that last meeting, that the, some of that COVID funding had, had to do with why they're, they had decrease in, in state aid for the school. But she said it's like every other year, it's up and down and it's not very predictable. And I believe Steve Coleman, I don't know, Nick, if this is right, but I thought Steve Coleman said that the state was working on something. Do you recall that?
Yes, I do. You're talking about the conference we had, I think with the Auditor General's Office. Attending to the school committee's request for approximately $970,000 of reserve funds.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I do remember that. And I think Member Ludwig's question is an excellent question. It sort of draws together one of the most enigmatic issues of law and policy in state government. Because school funding is, and I don't mean this in a pejorative way. I'm drawing to some degree on my experience as a legislator. School funding is as much political as it is legal. And again, I don't mean that in a pejorative way, but it gets amended every single year. And it really depends on what the collective wisdom of the General Assembly is in that particular year. And then, of course, you take that law that's passed each year, the budget, the state budget, and it's handed over to the Department of Education and so forth, and the funding is almost impossible to predict unless it's really, really clear. So your suggestion is a really good one, which is you've got to set some parameters. This is what I think you could try to get the legislative delegation for Coventry on board with. We need some parameters so that the swings of, you know, in some cases, $900,000 don't happen every year because it just takes all of the predictability out of our planning and policy. We're just, you know, trying to make up ground every year that we've lost in what is essentially the annual budget bill or the annual pronouncement by the Department of Education of how they interpret that bill. That's something that the legislature has to do. They are the only ones who can provide the sufficient clarity to the school funding formula that will relieve us of this annual event where we're just caught scrambling. And it's not a criticism of the General Assembly. It's, it's a complicated place. But it's, it's something that I think is doable if we can get our legislative delegation behind it. It's, the budget is an annual seminal event at the State House that attracts more attention than anything else they do all year. And that's where a lot of this takes place. We just need to have some type of law that gives more predictability. It's, it's an excellent request. I don't know if you can get it done. But we are the seventh largest municipality in Rhode Island and we have a lot of legislators. And they could really help us on this.
Mr. Gorham, would it be reasonable to think of it in these simple terms? That any reduction could be, could not be more than, say, 20% of what you got the previous year? Now, I mean, the formula is very complex. It looks at, Mr. Wazika is shaking his head. That wouldn't work.
Ma'am, any, the problem with this is, any amount of reduction in that from the prior year, that's burnt into the budget already. So if they take 2% out of 23 million, that's $460,000 that the town has to make up. Because it's already, it's already earmarked in the budget. What we need is M O E. The state needs to live under the same conditions that we live under, which if you give the money one year, moving forward, you've got to at least match that amount. Because again, like you said, 970,000 came out of that thing from last year that we have to try to make up. It's the only fair way is for, for them to live under the same conditions that they force us to live under. And is it going to happen? I agree with Mr. Gorham. I don't see, I, it's going to be a difficult deal to get. But any kind of reduction is going to hurt us.
But how could this, Ms. Ludwig has an idea here. How could this be framed in such a way that we can be a little bit more specific, not so gray, but a little more specific so that we can at least get this item on the agenda and maybe have people take a look at it?
I, I think it's an excellent topic for discussion at our legislative meeting. I mean, look what it's doing to us this year. You know, we finally achieved really strong bond status because we've put away reserves through all the things we've had to do with, especially with the leadership of our town manager. We have managed to put away a significant amount of money to, to make our bond rating better, which I think is, it's now one double A. Am I correct, Ed?
Yes.
So, and yet, the solution to this year's education problem is going to be to defund our, our reserve while at the same time, we're trying to have a conversation with the school committee about borrowing 60, 60 million dollars to rebuild.
Eighty-five, eighty-five million.
Eighty-five million, okay. So, but if that isn't the epitome of something, that's, that's a paradox, you know, really. It's something we should discuss. The idea that I think Member Ludwig has brought up is a really good one. It's really not the town council's place to put together the whole written law on this. The legislators have many, many resources available to them up at the State House to draft legislation and put it in. And what, what we want is to see some legislation. And I think the, you know, when I was, when I was in the House, this was always the one, number one issue because it directly correlated to property taxes. Your property tax bill was in large part driven by the amount of money that the General Assembly through the Department of Education allocated to whatever town you were representing. At one time, I represented three different towns. And it, it's something they can do. They have the tools to do that. We need to alert them to that and request that they help. When we meet with them next, I think it's next, is it next week or the week?
The 17th, yes. So, so we can put on the agenda a request for legislation to do what? How would we frame it so that people come away and they understand exactly what we're trying to do?
To stabilize school funding year to year.
Stabilize school funding year to year.
Yes.
So that would be one of our agenda items, a request for legislation to stabilize school funding year to year.
Yes, and.
How does that, how does that sound to the rest of the members of the council?
I think it should be on there.
Mr. LeBlanc?
It should be on there with just clarification to current homeowners that there's no negative impact to them.
Okay. No negative impact, all right.
I think the goal is, is to, I don't know if stabilize is the, is the right word. Stabilized, stabilized doesn't feel like the appropriate word because stabilize means almost like.
Static.
Yeah, a static number.
Phrase it.
Yeah, we either need to formulate, we need to predict, we need something other than.
Well.
Statisticity.
Improve, improve the school funding.
Yeah, because at this point, you know, a few ideas have been mentioned. So I said, maybe, maybe a cap on, on how, how much less you can get. Mr. Wazika said, you know, really, you know, what's good for the goose is you need to give what you did last year. So maybe we can throw out those ideas as things that we've talked about and get their feedback on what, what they think might be achievable.
We could, we could replace stabilize by maintain or increase school funding year to year. Would that be more?
May want to throw in the word state. Just so it's not local school funding, it's a state school funding. Just want to clarify that.
State.
I think that's an important clarification.
Okay, I just put that in.
Thank you.
Mr. Wazika, question?
No, ma'am.
Any other suggestions? Okay. And then we also had from a previous meeting, Rhode Island General Law 445-2, the maximum levy. I think, and Mr. Gorham was writing the resolution for us, which we said that, or he has written it, which we said that we were going to vote on at the meeting, correct?
Correct.
With that.
Yes.
And then the third issue is the resolution that Mr. LeBlanc wants to offer.
At that meeting, yes.
At that meeting, yes. So those are three issues we have thus far. Is there anything else? Mr. LeBlanc?
The only other suggestion that I would have other than Kent County Water Resolution is Senators Raptakis and Rogers have a Senate Bill 2021 S114. And it's regarding sewers. And it specifically states that the town of Coventry shall not assess upon the owners of land the costs associated with repaving the roadway upon completion of any sewage work within town. Now, I understand the comment can be made that the town did not on, I think, Arnold Road and Hazard Street. But that, I think, was due to uproar related to the citizens. They currently have the op, the town has the option to include it, but this bill will actually not allow it ever going forward. And I think the reason why I think we should support that is there are other streets in town that get paved and after, that don't have sewers. And after that paving, nobody gets knocked on the door and gets handed an assessment. So to treat the homeowners on the street in which the town council is selecting sewers for fairly, I do not believe that should be a cost included in sewer assessments.
I, if, if I, if I may add, I, I, I agree with Mr. LeBlanc completely, but I think it should be handled on a local level. And we simply change the way we do the assessment calculation and make it part of our ordinance that says it's not included. I don't, I don't think we need the state to tell us to do it. I think it's something you, the council should do and make that part of it. Just my.
How easy is it to change that?
Yeah.
Can I ask? You know, I would want to have it in the place where it's the hardest to change.
State law would be the hardest to change. Ordinance could easily be changed.
Don't be so sure.
The easiest place to change would be in our own ordinance.
That would be, that'd be the easiest place to change, yes.
Yes.
We should probably change it there too.
I would agree with Member Shockley that we should change it in both places.
Okay, so if we change it in both places, we could, we could put on an agenda. The, we could have Mr. Gorham look at the ordinance, present us with an amendment, and we could start to the discussion in a council meeting. Okay, and then in the meeting with the representatives and the senators, what would be our ask?
I, if I may, I just have a hard time with the senators and the reps controlling our town. I think we need to have, we control our own destiny. And I think the council needs to handle this and not be, I don't think we should be relying on Senator Raptakis or any other members of trying to dictate to the town what we should do and how we should do it. I think we need to take control. And if you feel as though it doesn't belong in there as part of the charges, then you can eliminate it without needing the state to say, please come in and oversee us. We can do it ourselves by simply doing what we need to do and make it right. Just my input.
President Dixon, I, I'm not familiar with Member LeBlanc's the, the potential resolution or whatever, yeah, that's being done.
His resolution is of the Kent County Water Authority.
Yes, I'm sorry, the, the, the item that you mentioned.
Vice President Ludwig is referencing Senate Bill 114.
Yes, I'm, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that, so I'd be happy to take a look at that. However, I do agree with the sentiment of Town Manager Wazika that this is changeable in our own ordinance. And so to burden the state with something and have them, not even burden, but to give them the power to implement that over us that we can put in our own ordinance rather easily, frankly, doesn't, doesn't feel like the right thing to do. And frankly, I think we have multiple things in that ordinance that we need to address very quickly. My interpretation of how we would be handling the upcoming working session would be kind of the kickoff to a review of multiple items in that ordinance that we would do this year. So my expectation is that there will be suggested changes to the sewer ordinance that we will bring to this council this year. So I would like to read the suggested res bill that's being put forward. I'd be happy to do that. But I do want to say we we have the ability to to put that in our own ordinance. And I'd like to consider doing that rather than taking it out of our hands if possible. Thank you.
Mr. Shockley, your view?
So, something that Member LeBlanc, Member Ludwig just said, Member LeBlanc, just something. It got me thinking. If we're changing multiple things in our ordinance, if that's the way we end up going, and I I don't know. Would we want the state to be putting forth legislation on every change we make to it? So I plan on doing the same and looking at this legislation. And, you know, I wonder if most towns have done it in this way or, you know, something like this in the same way through state as opposed to local changes. But I think we all agree that we want to look locally either instead of or as well. So that's the decision really to make, I think, is we want it changed in more than one place. And I think regardless of what happens with the legislation in the state, it sounds as if we're going to look at making the change locally.
And the only only follow up I I have, President Dixon, is many citizens went to the, just say, a former town council and asked for the interest rate to be reduced from six to three. And it did not happen at the local level. So we needed the state's support. And I also think that the assessments right now are just so high. And I just, I personally want to show the residents that legislation should be changed to protect them. But however, we want, as a council, want it to handle it, I I will I will agree with, obviously.
Help me help me understand twenty twenty-one dash set S one fourteen.
That is, that is the bill that Senator Raptakis and Rogers have some introduced. And all it does is add, it adds one sentence to the current sewer or sewer law at the state level that is related to Coventry. And it specifically just has one sentence that says that the town is not allowed to include paving costs in the sewer assessments. That is the only change. It's actually the sentence that I previously read to you guys.
Yeah, that is just changing it that Coventry cannot do that or any town cannot do that?
So the it's an act relating to the Coventry Sewer Authority.
Okay.
And it's just one sentence. It says, the town of Coventry shall not assess upon the owners of the land the costs associated with repaving the roadway upon completion of any sewage works within town. That is the only change.
It it seems like, from what I'm hearing, that we can accomplish the same goal by changing an ordinance. Is that correct, Mr. Gorham?
Yes, and I dare say you could probably do it faster if there is support because the General Assembly, I mean, with minor exceptions, a lot of things get put off until the end. I won't get into pondering why that is. That's not anywhere we're going to go. But it certainly could be done in this town council chamber relatively quickly. You have to put in the amendment for a first reading. Then you have the second reading, at which time you can have a, you have to have a public hearing and you can vote. Done by early March.
Attorney Attorney Gorham, I will submit it to you.
Okay, I'm looking at one fourteen right now online. I'm on the General Assembly website.
No, no, the ordinance change, I'll, I will submit it to you. So you have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Don't don't need to spend another time.
So it sounds like there's consensus that we want to proceed along the route of changing our local ordinance to put in that paving cost should not be included with the sewer assessment. It seems to be the direction in which we're going. Ms. Ludwig also suggests, and I agree with her, that there are probably many other things in the ordinance that need to be changed, but we need to do that in a very deliberate way once we start having our sewer workshops and we start looking into the whole situation in much more detail. So that will come along, but we seem to have consensus on paving. So we can do something on a local level. So the question remains, do we want to tell people in the assembly who have submitted this bill to hold off on it because we're going to take care of it ourselves, that we don't need it at the put in at the state level? Is that what we want to do? Or do we let them just go along and do what they want to do and we do our thing? We got seem to be two power, two paths going here now.
The end result is the same, but sorry, sorry.
The only difference is I would like to see where people, how much political capital people have to spend because there are some other ordinances that right now we're looking to push forward. And if we can get their support, you know, I know legislatively, there's only so much you can ask for with give and take. So, you know, I think that's something to discuss at the meeting as well with our legislation.
When you say discuss, there's something else to discuss, what do you mean by that?
Well, just the importance of the different things we're bringing up to our council.
How would, how would that be framed as an agenda item? Because we just can't open discussion on any topic. So how would you like that framed as an agenda item?
I don't think it's changing any topics. I think we're putting forth what, right now, we're coming up with what's important to our council, to our town council. And I think it's important to make sure there's an understanding of the hierarchy of need and the hierarchy of importance.
So President Dixon, maybe maybe we can add it on to the agenda to discuss because I'd like to know why, for something that we can easily do on our side, and it sounds as though there is support for, I'd like to know why they're introducing this, you know, on on their side. So maybe there's, maybe there's something we haven't talked about. Again, I haven't seen it. I'd like to know why they do that. And and my my initial reaction is to ask them to hold.
So I'm going to put on the agenda the intention of the Coventry Town Council to change the ordinance, appropriate ordinance, so that we can remove paving costs from the sewer assessment calculation. And then we can get into a discussion of what the what the Senate bill is intending to do and whether it really is needed. I think that would be a good approach.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question to Mr. Gorham?
Yes.
Sure.
Nick, in the past, I I've always, if if someone in the House or the Senate is going to move something forward in reference to our town, haven't they always approached the council prior to, before doing this?
It's a matter of practice in the General Assembly that before a bill such as one, I think it's one fourteen that we've been talking about, before it can move ahead, there has to be a council resolution supporting it. If that answers your question.
Yes, I just find it odd that we, I I'm not aware of it being, of us being notified of this.
I just looked at the bill. It's a, it's a proposal to amend the charter of our sewer system, which has only been amended, I think, three times since its original enactment. That would be nineteen ninety-seven. I think it was two thousand. I don't want to be wrong. I think it's two thousand fourteen and two thousand nineteen, if I'm not mistaken. Those are the only times it's been amended. We usually do it as a kind of omnibus amendment. I'm not saying that, except with one exception, Member Rep Tag, Senator Raptakis did put through the interest bill just a couple of years ago, if I'm not mistaken, which limited the interest that could be collected by the town. But I I must say, the council had a proposal to do the exact same thing, which I believe it was going to pass. I can see. Right there.
It was passed after the legislation was passed.
Right, right, that's right. You are correct about that. I think it was prepared before the legislation passed. But in any event, look, they're both good ideas. There's no question about it. If there's support for the council, the council can do an amendment to the sewer ordinance. And if the senators feel that it's still their duty to put it into our charter, I guess they can go ahead and do that. There will be a moment of reckoning, though, where the council has to decide, do we really want to amend our charter every time that we want to do something like this? Or is it sufficient to amend the ordinance? That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Any word discussion on this? I think we have a good plan. Now, our town clerk, we have three items for our agenda. Could you read them back to us?
Let's see, I gotta go back into my notes. All right, there was stabilizing school funding year to year. Was that the final decision we had on that? I'm not sure.
That's not the final wording, but that's the, it has to do with school funding. So that's one, I'll massage that based on the words that I heard this evening. The second one is.
Let's see.
Forty-four five two.
Forty-four five two, maximum levy.
Oh, right, yes. Nick was going to write something on the maximum levy.
Already written it, but I.
The third one has to do with the resolution that Mr. LeBlanc is submitting for Kent County Water Authority. And then we also are going to have as a discussion item our intention to change one of our ordinance to exclude paving from from sewer assessment costs. So those will be the four. Anything else? This is a very solid list. Are we okay with this list?
I don't think we want to add anything.
Experience, watching this every year, it's it's better to have a list like this, very short, concise. And, you know, manageable.
Does this, this has to be posted on the twelfth, which is the end of this week? So, oh, Mr. LeBlanc, question?
Have any of the reps or senators given you any topics, President Dixon, that they wanted to discuss? That we should be aware of?
No.
Okay.
I have not even ever heard of them presenting anything ahead of time. That doesn't mean they haven't. It's just that I haven't been pretty.
I do want to, I do, I do want to just call out, I know Senator Raptakis did send you and me a link of S Senate Bill one fourteen. And I think he wanted to reference it for the meeting, but I just want to call that out.
Yeah, thank you so much. I appreciate that. I forgot that. In the heat of the discussion. Okay, it's okay. We're moving along at a good pace here. Okay, now we're on to the fun part. And this is, we're on E one, Appointment of Members to Boards and Committees, Commissions. I'd just like to mention that the council interviewed twenty-five people who applied for an opening on a board or a commission. And we interviewed people on Saturday, February sixth, twenty twenty-one. We started at eight thirty in the morning and we completed our work at four P M. And it was just a very thrilling, exhilarating session that we had, at least I feel that way. We were greatly impressed by the enthusiasm of our town residents who wanted to serve the community. Many had never been on any board or commission ever. They've lived in town for short periods of time and long periods of time. And they really just felt that they wanted to come forward and help our community be better. So I think it's it's some kind of a virus that we want to make contagious so that people have enthusiasm for joining us. There will be appointments tonight, and there will be more appointments at the next council meeting. And there'll also be another round of openings in May-June twenty twenty-one. And we'll go through another round of interviews. So, Madam Clerk, the first appointment is for the Tax Assessment Board of Review. Madam Clerk, please read the resolution for Mr. Joseph Spata.
Get into that page, one second.
Page eighty-two of our packet.
Okay, so, Resolution of the Town of Coventry, State of Rhode Island, Appointing One Member to the Board of Assessment Review in accordance with Article Five, Section ten point forty of the Coventry Home Rule Charter. Whereas the Coventry Home Rule Charter requires that there be Board of Assessment Review consisting of five members for a term of six years, be it resolved that the town council hereby reappoints or appoints Joseph Spata for a term of office expiring November first, two thousand twenty-six.
They may have a motion to approve.
Do a motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call, I'm sorry.
Sorry, on on the resolution, at least on the packet, it says representing district. And then it just says XXX. I don't just don't know if we just need to clarify what district he lives in.
Madam Clerk, would you insert the district that he belongs to?
I will.
Perfect, that's all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Anne Dixon.
Thank, yes. The resolution to appoint Mr. Spata to the Tax Assessment Board of Review is approved. Congratulations, Mr. Spata. The next appointments are the Coventry Historic Preservation Commission. Madam Clerk, read the resolution for Erin Brewster, term expiring August first, twenty twenty-one. Maureen Buffy, full term, and Colonel Anne Asumpco, full term. We encourage Mrs. Miss Brewster to reapply when her term is over because it's a very short term. As a note, we are not appointing any auxiliary members of the Coventry Historic Preservation Commission this evening. We did not have any applicants. So, Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Coventry, State of Rhode Island, Appointing Two Full and One Auxiliary Member to the Coventry Historic Preservation Commission in accordance with Ordinance Number four dash thirteen dash two eighty. Whereas the Town Council of the Town of Coventry hereby appoints. We're going to do.
Maureen Buffy.
Maureen Buffy. As a full member of the Coventry Historic Preservation Commission to an unexpired term of office expiring August first, two thousand twenty-three. And we appoint Erin Brewster as a full member of the Coventry Historic Preservation Commission to an unexpired term of office expiring August first, two thousand twenty-one. And then we're going to appoint Anne Asumpco as a auxiliary member of the Coventry Historic Preservation Commission to an unexpired term of August first, two thousand twenty-three.
I have a question. We were told that there were three openings. What does an auxiliary member mean? This is the first time I saw it on this resolution. Is that like an alternate or is it a full member?
Alternate.
It's an alternate?
Yes.
Okay, well, we will, we will appoint her as an alternate then.
What does that mean? Will she be attending all the meetings but can't vote?
I think we thought, we thought, we thought there were three full openings.
I mean, I can't access my, I can't get on my laptop to to look it up. I can get back to you on that.
Okay, then I think what we need to do is postpone this because there were three openings. The group does not have a quorum. It needs three, three members to have a quorum. So we'll have to come back on this because there may be a problem with the use of auxiliary, maybe a problem with the use of auxiliary on the resolution. Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion to postpone this appointment to next. Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion to postpone this appointment to next week until we get full clarity on this.
I'll make a motion to postpone.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All right, roll call vote.
Lugwick?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Anne Dixon.
Yes. Okay, the motion has been approved to postpone the appointment until the next meeting. Pending clarification, the number of full-time openings. Okay, next is the Coventry Board of Canvassers. Madam Clerk, read the resolution for the appointment of Julie Stefanic.
Resolut, the Town Council of the Town of Coventry, State of Rhode Island, Appointing One Member to the Coventry Board of Canvasses and Registration. Whereas the Town Council appoints members to the Coventry Board of Canvasses and Registration for a term of six years. Whereas there are now existing vacancy due to the expiration of one term of office. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Coventry hereby appoints Julie Stefanic to fill one full expired term of office ending March 1st, 2027.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Jennifer Lugwick?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Anne Dixon.
Yes. The motion to approve the appointment of Ms. Stefanic passes. Congratulations, Ms. Stefanic. The Coventry Economic Development Commission. Madam Clerk, read the resolution for Mr. Pandato, Dr. DiKubelis, Ms. Erin Bosworth, Mr. Pascal.
And I just lost my spot.
President Dixon?
Yes.
Are we going to separate this one?
Separate, what does that mean?
To recuse myself from one of the votes?
You can do that, yes.
Do I need to do that now or after the resolution's read?
After the resolution is read and when we ask for the vote, you can recuse yourself at that point in time. Thank you, thank you.
Resolution of the Town of Coventry, State of Rhode Island, Appointing Members to the Coventry Economic Development Commission in accordance with Resolution Number 12-11-4071. Whereas Resolution 12-11-4071 established a Coventry Economic Development Commission consisting of seven members. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Coventry approves the Town Manager's appointments of the following as members of the Coventry Economic Development Commission. We got Craig Pandato, Dr. Douglas DiKubelis, Erin Bosworth, and John Pascal.
May I have a motion to approve the appointments?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote?
So, yeah, so discussion, please. So, Ed, should I leave? I don't know, are you voting on all of them at the same time or individual?
We can vote on them one at a time, but the resolution is written so that they're all appointed at the same time, at the, through the resolution.
Madam Chair, if I may bring up a point?
Yes.
This talks about the Town Manager appointments on the, on this commission.
Okay, so what will we do? Make your recommendations to you, Mr. Manager?
Nick?
I think it's an ordinance that allows the Town Manager to make those appointments, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
I mean, procedurally, it would be better if you could do the ordinance amendment in advance. What you could do for, i- if you want to amend the ordinance, but what you could do for tonight is just simply change one little section of the resolution to say that you recommend that the Town Manager appoint. I think that recommendation would probably be followed. I can't speak to the Town Manager, but.
I'll make, I'll make the motion that we amend the resolution so that it states now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Coventry recommends to the Town Manager the following appointments to the Coventry Economic Development Commission.
I ask one other question. I, I believe we've chosen to have a, a council member as one of the seven representatives of the Economic Development Commission. Is that person simply appointed, or are they one of the seven that the Town Manager should be appointing?
I, I think it is an, a person who is added to the group. It just says in the ordinance, nine people. So, we did ask for a Town Council member to be a member of that particular group. So, it's not clear to me, but I thought we would appoint Ms. Ludwig as we went along. But I think first of all, we have a motion on the floor to amend the resolution. So we have to vote on that amendment first, and then we can proceed along with some of these other procedural issues. Okay, so we have a question?
Madam President, I think it's actually the charter that provides in Section 13.4 that, I'll just read it. It says Town Councils hereby authorized to establish an Economic Development Commission to promote and encourage the location and development of new business and so forth. Town Council shall prescribe the duties of said commission. The Town Manager shall appoint the members to serve at the manager's pleasure.
Okay, so we can, we've got this amendment on the floor now that changes the resolution that.
I think Member LeBlanc's amendment is actually in order if.
It is.
Yeah.
We need to vote on that. Okay, so there's amendment to change the resolution that it says now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Coventry shall recommend appointments to the Economic Development Corporation to the Town Manager. Is that acceptable?
I think it's commission, not corporation, commission.
Commission. Excellent. Okay, do we have a second?
So, can we ask one more question, please? Are we gonna do all of these together? Because again, I wanted to know whether I need to recuse myself from the entire thing? If we're gonna do all four or just from one, if we're gonna separate one?
Madam President, may I make a suggestion? Generally speaking, what we have done in the past is if a motion is divisible, that is, you can discriminate between each section of it or each appointee. It's typically done as a courtesy to divide it so that the member can vote on the two she does want to vote for and avoid the vote on the one she does not. We just need to have that specified, what the two are that Member Ludwig can vote on, and then you vote on that, and then and then you vote on the other last person to be appointed. That would be my suggestion.
Okay, thank you. First of all, we have to vote on the amendment. So we've got amendment on the floor. We've got a second. We now have to have a roll call vote to approve the amendment.
Okay, Jennifer Lugwick?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Anne Dixon.
Yes. Okay, the amendment is approved. Now we need to vote on the resolution as amended. So, Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution as amended?
I have the first version that Jamie had mentioned. You mentioned the second one, and I didn't get the whole entire wording that you had given. I have now therefore it be resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Coventry recommends to the Town Manager appointments of the following as the member of the Coventry Economic Development Commission.
That's fine.
Okay.
It's just a reversal of one word. That's fine. Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. We have a second for the amended motion. All right, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
We just, we just did that, I thought. I'm sorry.
We did that for the amendment, but not for the amended motion. We have to do it for the amended motion.
Jennifer Lugwick?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Anne Dixon.
Yes. Okay, now we will go to the appointments. Ms., Ms. Ludwig, which two would you like to be recused on?
So Erin Bosworth?
Yes.
From the Economic Development Committee? The other three I can vote on if you want to separate them like that.
Okay, we'll do that. All right, we will take a motion on the floor to to recommend to the Town Manager, Ms. Erin Bosworth.
So should I leave the Zoom?
You don't have to leave.
You can stay here.
I'll, I'll just go off video.
Okay, so, so there's a motion to, to recommend to the Town Manager, Ms. Erin Bosworth. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, may I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Okay. Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Anne Dixon.
Yes. The motion passes to recommend to the Town Manager the appointment of Ms. Erin Bosworth to the Economic Development Commission. Okay, now we will take a motion to recommend to the Town Manager for the Economic Development Commission. Mr. Panado, Dr. DiKubelis, and Mr. Pascal. May I have a motion for those three people, appointments?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Okay, Jennifer Lugwick?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Anne Dixon.
Yes. The recommendation for Mr. Panado, Dr. DiKubelis, and this Pascal, Mr. Pascal passes. Mr. Waziger, I'll send you a complete list of these people.
Ms. Ludwig, you need to file a, a recusal form with the clerk on that, just to remind you.
Okay.
Okay, the next is the appointments to the Land Trust, the Coventry Land Trust. I would like to postpone this appointment, so may I have a motion to postpone to February 22nd?
I'll make a motion to postpone.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second that.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Just any, any particular reason? President Dixon, just so the public knows.
Yes, we are trying to make sure that all these boards and commissions have representation from as many districts as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Okay, roll call vote, please, on the postponement.
Jennifer Lugwick?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley? Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Anne Dixon.
Yes, the motion to postpone appointments to the Land Trust to February 22nd passes. The next is the Juvenile Hearing Board. Madam Clerk, read the resolution for Ms. Tara Fontaine, Mr. Mark Monahan, Ms. Erin Hughes, and Ms. Jamie Bernard.
Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Coventry, Rhode Island, Appointing Four Members to the Juvenile Hearing Board in accordance with Article 2, Section 5-15 of the Coventry Code of Ordinances. Section 1, that the Town Council of the Town of Coventry hereby appoints Tara Fontaine to a three-year term of office expiring December 1st, 2023. Mark Monahan, Erin Hughes, and Jamie Bernard also to a three-year term, December, expiring December 1st, 2023.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Discussion?
President Dixon, can we separate this one also?
Yes.
So I'll, I'll have to fill out that form again, Ed, for recusal on Erin Hughes.
All right, so we will, okay, the motion will be for appointment of Tara Fontaine, Mark Monahan, and Jamie Bernard. We'll take those three as a group. So may I have a motion for those three? We're gonna have to separate those for those three first. May I have a motion? Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Anne Dixon.
Yes.
I believe Jennifer's Dennis
Jennifer.
Doing this one. She's not.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I had a, a small guest behind me. I did not hear the name that you just said.
Jennifer Lugwick?
No, I'm sorry, I heard my name. I didn't, I'm sorry. I know, it's so late. I'm sorry, everyone. Who, who are we voting on?
For the people that you can vote on.
Okay.
Ms. Monahan and Ms. Bernard.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, excellent. Okay. Congratulations, Ms. Fontaine. Mr. Monahan. And Ms. Bernard. Okay, we will now read the resolution to appoint Ms. Erin Hughes to the Juvenile Hearing Board. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Anne Dixon.
Yes, the motion passes to appoint Ms. Erin Hughes to the Juvenile Hearing Board. Congratulations to all of you. It was a pleasure meeting everyone that we met on Saturday. And we hope to complete the appointments next meeting that we have of the Town Council. And we also expect many more appointments to be made following vacancies that will occur in May and June of this coming year. I think we're ready for public comment. We're opening public comment, Mr. Waziger. Anyone on for public comment?
At this point, we have no hands raised. Anyone out in monitoring, watching this program, if you'd like to make a public comment, please raise your hand and I will bring you into the meeting. Public comment is now open. Public comment is going once. Going twice. Three times. No take up. We
We got one.
At the last minute. Mr. Clements, when I bring you in, please state your name, spell your last name, and give your address, please. Mr. Clements?
Josh Clements, C.L.E.M.E.N.T.S., 10 Gentry Farm Drive. Kind of wore me out with all the motions. Kind of wore me out with all the motions there, but I appreciate taking the public comment. I just wanted to add with regards to the legislator meeting, I think it was brought up, but, you know, asking what is it that the legislators are doing to help support the town of Coventry? So if they can come with a canned presentation brief on what they're working on that will support the town versus us having to go asking them to investigate water bills and how to fund the town and how the state can help us, not what we can do for them, I suppose, is general gist of my comment. Appreciate the time. Appreciate the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clement. We can add that to our agenda.
Any other hands? Any other hands? Any other hands? All right, nobody else is gonna get under the wire this time, ma'am.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn at 8:21 P.M.?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote?
Jennifer Lugwick?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Anne Dixon.
Yes. The meeting is adjourned at 8:21. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.